Given to the provisions of 2.68.030, the Metropolitan Code of Law, notice is hereby given that a final hearing before this commission is appealable to the Chancery Court of Davidson County or the Circuit Court of Davidson County via statutory writ or certiorari. Your advice, seek your own independent legal counsel to ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely matter and that all procedural requirements are met. You should also seek independent legal advice regarding the applicability of the writ of certiorari to the specific decision of the Historic Zoning Commission. Has everyone reviewed last month's minutes?
Yes, move for approval.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, approval of last month's minutes. We're about to start the consent agenda. There are two notes to bring to your attention. 1206 Woodland Street has been removed and 2812 Oakland Avenue has been pulled from the consent agenda and will be part of our normal agenda.
As Commissioner Tibbs mentioned, 2812 Oakland has been removed from the consent agenda. The remaining items on the consent agenda are as follows. 1805 Forest Avenue, application to demolish a non-contributing building in Lachlan Springs. 1808 Ordway Place, application to construct a rear addition and a front porch addition on a non-contributing building in Lachlan Springs. 3815 Central Avenue, an application to construct a rear addition in the Richland West End District. 316 South 11th Street, application to construct a rear addition in Lachlan Springs. And finally, 700 Russell Street, application to construct a rear addition to the Edgefield Baptist Church and the Edgefield Historic Zoning Overlay. This addition does require a setback reduction. Staff recommends approval of all these projects with their respective conditions outlined in the staff recommendations.
The items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time and no individual public human will be held nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that an item be removed from the consent agenda. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to talk about or mention anything about anything on the consent agenda? Okay, public hearing was closed for consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
All those four?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now with the new business, I guess we'll start with the one that was pulled from the consent agenda first, which is 2812 Oakland Avenue.
2812 Oakland Avenue is a contributing bungalow in the Belmont Hillsborough neighborhood. The application is to demolish an existing rear addition and an existing accessory structure and to construct a new rear addition. The project also includes reopening the enclosed front porch and restoring the front facade. Staff asked for three conditions of approval related to the restoration of the front porch. One, that the existing porch columns be kept if they are structurally sound. Two, if photographic or documentary evidence of what the front facade originally looked like is found, then the applicant restore the front facade to its original appearance. And three, staff review the exposed front facade once the existing enclosure is removed to determine if any original openings and/or materials should be preserved. So if you have the site plan in front of you, you'll see that the new addition will be four feet wider than the house on its right side. The addition meets all of code's setback requirements. Under the application, the house with the addition will be 23, I'm sorry, 24 feet, three inches deeper than the existing house. The square footage of the house will increase by approximately 756 square feet and the open space ratio of the site will decrease from 77% to 71%. Staff finds this increase in size and scale to be in scale with the size of the historic house and to be compatible with the neighborhood. If you look at the first floor plan, the addition is separated by the house by an alcove that is set in 18 inches on the left side and two feet on the right side. That alcove is five feet deep. After the alcove, the addition extends to be four feet wider than the existing house only on the right side. If you look at the two side elevations, you'll see that the addition will be lower in height than the existing house by a minimum of five feet. The lesser height of the addition and the slope of the site will help reduce the impact of the wider portion of the house, as will the addition's side gable roof form. There's also the rear addition, I'm sorry, the rear elevation in your packet and there should be also a photograph of the existing conditions in the rear yard and you can see the existing addition that's going to be demolished. The addition's materials will be cement fiberboard, wood trim, masonry foundation with a parge coat, a stone accent, and architectural dimensional fiberglass compositions shingles. The materials of the windows and doors and the deck railing were not specified. Staff asks that a condition of approval be that the staff review and approve a stone sample, the asphalt shingle color, the deck railing material, and the window and door specifications and materials prior to purchase and installation. So in conclusion, staff finds the proposed addition to meet the design guidelines for the Belmont Hillsborough Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay. It scales in keeping with the neighborhood and its extra width is mitigated by several factors, including the fact that the house has shifted to the north side of the lot. There's a five-foot-deep structural alcove that is set from the sidewalls of the house before that wider portion of the addition. The addition is five feet shorter than the house and its roof form will be a side gable. With the aforementioned conditions, staff recommends approval of the project. And I can answer any questions about the project and I believe there are other people here to speak on the item today.
Okay. Any questions right now for staff? Okay, we will open the public hearing. Well, first, I guess if the owner would like to come speak, the owner or architect When you reach the podium, please state your name and address, please.
Good afternoon. I'm Michael Ward with Allard Ward Architects, representing the house on Oakland Avenue. And Melissa did a wonderful job of sort of summarizing the addition and for the most part, sort of the whole sort of design sort of thought behind it. These bungalow additions are difficult because massing is critical and the slope of the lot really definitely helps us in this case. The added width allows us to keep this addition from getting any deeper into the yard. It basically allows us to saddle the two most important rooms in the house, the master bedroom and the new family room beside one another, and that's a critical part of any new home. So anyway, we've made a few minor adjustments with Metro's guidance and my client here, Joe Kovalek, is anxious to get started. Joe?
Thanks, Michael. I'm builder, developer, and also neighbor of this property.
What was your name again? I'm sorry.
Joe Kovalek.
Joe Kovalek.
Company's Dream Inc.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Do you have any, are you okay with the staff recommendations that they've, the conditions on the approval? Have you?
Yes, Melissa and I have spoken about it. Melissa, Robin and I have all talked.
Okay, so you're good with that? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is anyone else like to speak for or against a seat away? Please state your name and your address.
My name is Don O'Donnelly. I'm an attorney and I'm here representing David and Sarah Tarpley, who are immediately adjacent and abutting the side in question. And I'll try to stay within the two minutes, but let me just give you a brief bibliography. Some years ago, I worked for Metropolitan Government and when I did, I helped draft the legislation that created this body that's sitting here today. So I guess I birthed you. Welcome to my world. I'm an attorney. I'm also American Institute Certified Planner and member of the Florida Green Building Council. So those are my professional credentials and I've been practicing both fields for some 30 years. Our concern today is with the calculation for the rear addition primarily. And it centers on the extra four feet that were addressed here, which we believe is required to set in two feet. When you look at the architectural drawings of A 1.0 and A 1.1 in your packet, if you look closely, the dimensions that have been cited to you are the interior dimensions of the rooms and do not include the exterior walls and the interior walls. The actual width of this structure, according to the Metro Tax Assessor and according to my client's own measurement, is 32 feet. Therefore, we think this is not in compliance. We would ask that this be denied or continued and brought into compliance. In addition, just for the record, we had no, they received no notice of this project by phone, by sign, or any other means. It was through their own initiative that they discovered this and they are quite concerned about due process and that nature. In terms of measuring equities here, they have a right to air, light, and privacy. And the extra addition here, calling this centered to one side of the lot is spurious. It is not. All houses sit to one side or the other to some extent. This is not terribly off-center, does not justify any relief on that basis. We would simply ask that you follow the regulations relative to the foundation, have this redesigned to set in two feet along the entire side of the addition that's adjoining their property. And I think that probably summarizes it. You have my report in front of you. Be glad to ask any questions that you have. We also have concern that the FAR cited in that report, let me just mention that, refers to the footprint and that's not the way you calculate FAR. I've cited you to the code on that. Thank you.
Are there any questions before he leaves, actually? You have to forgive us, we just got this, so.
I understand.
Now, has staff--
I was only retained yesterday, so I could not produce it any sooner.
And staff hasn't had a chance to review it either, so.
That's quite all right.
Without in-depth reading this, is the argument in here that calculation of the FAR is simply incorrect in methodology or that this project is--
Well, it's not clear from the table that how it was calculated. I think you need a clear calculation. It's labeled as footprint and FAR is not footprint. It's all spaced in the building.
Sure.
And the second, more telling argument here is the requirement that what they've done is designed as though the structure were under 30 feet. And that's where you use the alcove and can go wider. And we do not believe this complies. This is a 32-foot building, therefore, if you read the foundation requirement, it's set in one foot for every story and this is by staff's own admission, a story and a half, so it should sit in two feet. It's just that simple. We have no opposition to anything that meets the law here.
Sure.
This guy's a great designer, we have no question about that. We just want to insist that the law be met. That's it.
In terms, then, the reason for including the FAR, which to my understanding is not necessarily regulated under the Design Guidelines, the Belmont Hillsborough and Zoning Commission Guidelines, is a base zoning issue?
You have to meet the base zoning requirement of the R8 district, which is .45.
Okay. And again, without reading this, does, based on your calculations, or is your argument that it does not?
Well, it's not clear because I didn't have time to sit down. I didn't have scale drawings, so I couldn't measure it. If I could, if I could have told you what it actually--
I understand. I just--
But the staff's own analysis says it's approaching 3,000 square feet with the proposed garage. Now, they've asked you to defer that, but that's a matter of request before you. Technically, on the face of the application, they're approaching 3,000 square feet by the staff's analysis on FAR. Well, 3,600 is the maximum permitted here, so.
We can clarify some of those issues once all the publicists have been heard.
Very well. Thanks.
Thank you.
I have a question for you, sir.
Yes?
Sorry. Your 30-foot dimension versus the 32-foot dimension?
Yes.
How did you get that?
Our 32 is from the tax assessor, who, by the way, uses GPS survey techniques now. It's not a guess. And in addition, both my clients are going to testify that they've actually physically measured the facade themselves. But that's in an affidavit attached to this package as well, but we'll let their testimony speak for itself.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you.
At this time. Would anyone else like to speak? When you reach the podium, just give your name and address, please.
I'm Sarah Tarpley. I live at 2814 Oakland Avenue, which is on the right side of 2812. I get through regular emails from the commission, so I received one and went and looked at the agenda. I then emailed Melissa and she told me when the plans would be online. I looked at the plans and I was very much concerned about the four feet that makes the addition much closer to our property, affecting our privacy and the light that hits our property. I understand from the guidelines that those side additions that extend further than the original building are supposed to be for rare and special circumstances, including if the building, the original building is 30 feet or less wide. As our attorney has stated, we did look at the tax assessor map showing 32 feet and my husband and I went over and looked, measured ourselves and came up with the same 32 feet. As our attorney has stated, we know Michael's work. He actually drew some plans for us once, but we are concerned about this four-feet extension and we do not think it meets the commission's guidelines.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
Thank you. I am David Tarpley, husband of Sarah Tarpley, also, of course, a resident at 2814 Oakland Avenue. And as any wise husband will do, I will say ditto to what my spouse just said. As she said, we did in fact, having studied the guidelines that this commission follows and having recognized the significance in this case of the 30 feet versus anything more, we did go and measured ourselves. We took a 50-foot steel tape and the other day measured it very precisely from the exterior corners of the front facade, one to the other, and it is exactly 32 feet, just as the Metropolitan Tax Assessor's record shows. And one of the items that was distributed this morning is, well, actually an affidavit from either each of us attesting to that, and also attaching the portion of the Metro Tax Assessor's record that Sarah actually took offline to show you. We did not receive much notice from ourselves and frankly, that's why you didn't get much notice. We had to do the best we could to figure out what was happening, talk to Mr. O'Donnelly, and here we are today. As he said, all we're asking is that the project as approved simply comport with the guidelines that this commission follows. And in light of the fact that this property has a front facade of more than 30 feet, we do believe that the projection on the right side, which will extend, as it will in this proposal, beyond the plane.
Time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anyone else like to speak on behalf? Please also stick your name and address.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Joseph Johnston. I live at 2815 Belmont Boulevard, approximately 100 feet from this particular property. I'm here today not so much on the merits of this particular project, but on the fact that I did not receive written notice of this public hearing and of the decision, pending decision by this board on this particular project. I was counsel of record for the great case of Metropolitan Government versus Hudson in 2003, which was appealed all the way to the United States Supreme Court, in which the courts recognize, you know, the statutory requirement that this commission is required to give public notice by mail 21 days prior to the subject of the hearing. And Mr. Tarpley and his wife did not receive notice. I did not receive notice. If there is documentation that notice was sent out, I would request that that be part of the record in this case. Further, I would like a copy of the case of Metropolitan Government versus Nashville versus Hudson also be made a copy or an exhibit to this record. And the documents referred to by Mr. O'Donnelly and the Tarpleys also be collectively made exhibits to this record. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I like to close public hearing at this time. Maybe first, let's, if staff could--
I can clarify a couple of things. In this particular case, they are not requesting any reduction to the setbacks or any change to the bulk zoning, so therefore, notice is not required. Notice is only required when, to property owners, when there is a change to the bulk zoning, and that's not part of the request. FAR is not something that we review or look at ever in this review. So by right, they have the right for this addition in terms of the bulk zoning.
Okay, thank you. Don, Melissa, did you have any other kind of response, any comments?
Well, just one point of clarification. We did know that the house was more than 30 feet. I think by the architecture drawings, it was shown to be 31 feet, nine inches. They were saying 32 feet. That's the difference of three inches. I think we're in the same ballpark there. The guidelines state regarding additions that are wider, I'm just going to read from them just so everyone knows. Rear additions that are wider than or equal in width to an existing historic building may be appropriate when the building is narrower than 30 feet, which this one is not, or shifted to one side of the lot. So we were saying because this one was shifted slightly to the left side of the lot, it met the guidelines. So that was the difference. Just wanted to bring up the width issue.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, could I have just a moment rebuttal to that point?
One second. Let me make sure there's no more questions of staff from any of the commissioners.
Robin, on your point of clarification, it has, perhaps zoning doesn't need to look at this in terms, I'm not familiar with what the FAR permitted would be for this lot, but have you gotten clarification from zoning office or is any necessary with regard to specifics of FAR?
Again, FAR is not something we've ever dealt with. I don't know what their regulations are. It's a completely different body. Now, there is the issue of lot coverage and this does meet the lot coverage. So again, it meets all the bulk zoning requirements.
Do we have any dimensions that, you say that it has shifted, the footprint of the original home has shifted to the left? What is the dimension to the right and to the left?
To the left, it's 10, I'm sorry, no. To the right, it's 10 feet from the property line and on the left side, it's seven feet from the property line. It's from the street, yeah. So I think that it'd be seven feet from the north side and 10 feet from the south side.
In addition to that, it actually sits a little bit crooked on the lot, you can see, and that was part of the reason too. Not just that it shifted over a little bit, but that it's kind of crooked and so then that, I wish we had our images. So that would then require that addition to kind of run into that setback line.
Any other questions from the commissioners, staff?
I'd just like maybe a point of clarification in my understanding of our guidelines in that, the guidelines themselves are, the guideline specifically with regard, the Belmont Hillsborough guidelines specifically with regard to B2 additions, item A, guidelines are in non-italicized text, guidelines themselves, and the italicized text is not a guideline per se as much as it is guidance.
That's correct. It's not a guideline, it's additional guidance to meeting that guideline.
Very well, thank you. Sir, I'm going to allow just a real quick, just a three-minute rebuttal. I want to make it really brief.
Hopefully, I won't need three minutes. I would just point out to you that in a 50-foot lot, a variance of three feet in how the front facade sits is a 5% to 6% variance, and that is not substantial and it does not justify any relief here. And furthermore, virtually every house that sits on this street varies to one degree or another relative to the sideline. So if we're going to use that as a basis, we're making an exception to a general rule based on a general pattern, and that's not appropriate legislative action. And I believe the commission would be acting ultra virus if they did. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any more information from staff or commissioners? Any more discussion? Questions?
If the house is, the addition is built as proposed, well, how much room will there be between the new addition and their lot, their line?
Hold on, just one second. Let's check the setbacks. It's a minimum of six feet on the south side and seven feet on the north side. So it will be, the setback, required setback is five feet, so it more than meets the setback requirements. So six feet, so on their side would be the, it'd be six feet from their property line, I believe, if they're to the staff's side.
Did you have a comment, Doug, or?
No, Robin properly pointed out that the applicant has an opportunity to do any rebuttal that they might see that was necessary, given what was said by the opposition, but that's up to the chair.
Okay. I see your standing. Do you want to come on up?
As mentioned, part of our goal here, and I think, you know, we've been involved in hearings, thankfully not projects, where there's been a lot of concern over the amount of lot coverage and also with the massing and the depth of additions. So our goal is to sort of keep that massing in check and also keep that addition from extending too far beyond the sort of footprint that seems rational for an addition of this size. We have used this type of addition format on other projects which you guys have approved. So when I, you know, make sort of design recommendations, I base it on sort of information we've gotten in the past. And for me, a lot of those houses are like, you know, I guess my children's middle names, I can't remember all the street addresses, but we have a very similar project on Brightwood that you approved about three years ago. We did a very similar addition there, same sort of reasoning behind it. And just about six months ago, you approved an addition that we did for a house that was definitely over 30 feet wide on Belmont Boulevard, where the exact same thing also happens there. So for us, we're not trying to do something outside of something that you would be reviewing. We base a lot of our decisions on past experience with the commission. So I definitely want to bring that up. But like I said, the added little bit of width on this house plays a really big part in the depth. And that seems like in terms of preserving light and view, keeping this house shallow and a little bit wider does a lot more good than pushing it out another four to six feet to make it for the difference in what we lose in footprint. And as was also noted, the house does sit a little cattywampus and in light of that, we never get close to the setbacks. And it's at least six foot in the most, in the tightest place, and it continues to move back from that point. So in light of what we're typically dealing with in these urban neighborhoods, being able to maintain, you know, the worst-case scenario is that sort of 22 feet where that setback's going to range between six and seven feet. Everywhere else, it's exceeding eight, nine, and 10 feet, which is, you know, in this neighborhood on these lots is pretty good.
Okay. Thank you very much. Did you have one last word?
No, ditto. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, any more, any discussion? Motion? Motion?
I'll move approval of 2812 Oakland Avenue with staff recommendations, which by the, I think by the applicant's admission here earlier, they are in agreement with, and specifically as the proposed or as submitted that the addition meets item 2B2 of the Belmont Hillsborough Design Guidelines, Neighborhood Conservation Overlay Design Guidelines, specifically that the building sets in from the sides as stated in the guidelines.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. One opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now on to the rest of the new business, 1701 Woodland Street. So I stepped away to try to talk to IT to get through the computer issue.
Oh, that's okay.
Wouldn't you know it, they just put me on hold.
Oh, wow. Okay, so again, apologize for not having images on screen, but certainly you all have your staff recommendations with drawings and photographs. 1701 Woodland Street in the Lachlan Springs East End, Neighborhood Conservation Overlay. The house is a non-contributing brick house. It was constructed in 1998, and at the rear of the property is a two-car garage constructed in 2000. Staff approved plans to construct a carport addition to that garage and issued a permit at staff level in November 2011. Initially, the applicant had proposed a separate detached structure, another one-car structure, but that, those plans were revised because it didn't meet the setback requirements. And during an inspection last month, staff observed that construction was not following the approved plans and that it didn't meet the setbacks required by bulk zoning. They are now proposing to reduce the setback for that accessory structure addition and to complete the work as started. Currently, as it's being built, the footprint of the structure would have a 5-foot setback from the side property line, which is along North 17th Street. For this, for this area, for this, excuse me, for this neighborhood, zoning requires street setbacks to be 20 feet, and that's just a standard, you know, the one-size-fits-all number. However, it allows a 50% reduction for side streets on corner lots where the rear of the lot faces the rear of another lot, which this one is. And the code also allows for the Metro Historic Zoning Commission to reduce setback requirements in order to allow construction to be more appropriate for existing conditions, to follow an appropriate typical location, such as this for accessory structures, which often are oddly placed or placed near an alley or something like that. And there certainly are instances where historic accessory structures have built, have been built and still are closer to the street than current zoning requirements would allow. And there have been occasions where the commission has approved setback reductions on atypical lots or on corner lots. And in those cases, there have been some concerns about what's appropriate historically versus what's appropriate in the current context and what's safe. So in order to help us handle those cases, staff adopted a policy by which we review setback reductions. And I had a great slide for it, and you have the text of that policy in your handouts. And if anybody needs, I have copies or could read it, but in the interest of time, I'll just skip along. But in essence, the commission has been cautious of reducing setbacks where there's a possibility of creating a safety hazard. In most cases on side streets, setbacks are required in order to avoid creating a situation where you impair the invisibility of drivers on the street from seeing cars turning onto or off of the alley or vice versa. Cars turning onto an alley, having to wait for a garage door to open, and cars backing up onto the street, something along those lines. And this lot is a fairly typical lot for the area. It's, other than being on the corner, it's 50 feet wide with, along this front street, with sufficient space to build within the current setbacks, and it has adequate alley access. Staff didn't determine there to be any hardships imposed by grade drops front to back, but it's fairly typical for lots in East Nashville to have some slope. Seeing that none of our, none of the criteria by which we review setback reductions have been met, we felt that the current setbacks were, should be maintained. In short, staff is recommending disapproval of the setback reduction, which of course means disapproval of the application to retain the work that's constructed in violation of the permit, finding the construction building, constructed building not to meet the design guidelines and not to meet the criteria for setback reductions.
Okay, thank you very much. Does the owner or owner like to say anything? Please come forward and state your name and address.
My name is Franklin Clark with Music City Remodeling, and I am the contractor of the project. I realized my mistake quickly after the codes guy came out there and pointed it out. Unfortunately, I had poured the foundation for the project before I realized that it was too close to the sidewalk. The corner of the building on the rear setback, it meets approval from the alleyway. The, I think the issue was from the sidewalk to the corner of the structure. We have 5 foot, where if you were to measure from the corner of the curb for the 4-foot sidewalk, we would have plenty of room there to, you know, for a setback. So it's, and I noticed in the neighborhood, I went around and started looking and talking to some of the other people in the neighborhood, and I have pictures here of some other buildings that are very similar, even closer to the street and the sidewalk, that had been built in the last few months, that the council here has given permission to do. And I'm just asking that maybe if there's no complaints from the neighborhood, we gave out letters to the individuals around the property and are just asking for a dislenient of about 3 feet.
I'm Rhonda Burnett. Sorry. The door, the access door, the garage door is way past the 10-feet setback. We moved that. And the visibility, as you said, the construction of the garage that Franklin was talking about was at 1401 Forest, where there's, they have a 3-feet variance that was approved by y'all, and they're 3 feet off the alley, which we're over 12 feet off the alley, and 7 feet from the corner, from the entrance to the alleyway of any structure. And this, the 1401 Forest Avenue is only 3 feet, both side and rear of that. So we're just requesting the setback, you know, which is less than actual 3 feet from the entranceway to the alley. And it's, the construction stayed behind the fence that I've had constructed for about 11 years. So all this structure is still, you know, behind the fence, and I don't think I had a problem with the fence, so, or the original construction of the first garage. And from what I understood from Sean, he said that the structure of the additional carport, there's not any issue with that. It's just a matter of these couple feet from the entrance to the alley. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is anyone else in the audience like to speak for or against? Okay, a closed public hearing. First, any questions to staff or?
So for clarity on the recommendations or let's say the criteria for reviewing setback reductions, were those criteria developed both to, how were those criteria developed? Is it traffic movement and buildings or, because it seems that from the applicant's thoughts on this and their desire to keep it as is, is that we're, those two things, while not entirely distinct from each other, certainly have some influence as to how we might, how permissive we might be on a project or the location on the side of a project.
I can, I can help with that. And it is policy. It's not in the design guidelines. But the reason this came up is because there have been several concerns recently. There are certainly historic buildings right on the property line. There are ones that you have, this body has approved in the past. And out of those came that concern over how this, how these setbacks are being determined. Codes developed them for reasons. We didn't want to just nilly-willy keep changing them every time somebody just asked, and so that was the reason behind it. Part of it is safety. Part of it is making sure that it's compatible with the neighborhood, but it is a policy. Did that really answer your question?
I think it did. I mean, the answer is yes, both and, I guess.
The measurements that the applicant brought up about being really only 3 feet, can you elaborate a little bit more on that, Sean?
Yeah, sure. On the, if you can kind of compare the photographs, on page nine of the recommendation, it says "view from alley." That's perhaps the best view. And then the, you know, sort of compare that with the drawing, which is the last page. From the inside edge of the sidewalk, which is where we understand codes and the city in general to measure the property line, it's, I guess, 3 feet to the fence. We don't review fences, so that's not really something we were taking into consideration. But then by my measurement, it was another 2 feet. I measured 5 feet from the, from the post to that property line, from the, so from the footprint of the structure, 5 feet. And then, as you can see, there's a, in that photograph, there's a pedestrian gate there, which, you know, is 4 feet or something along those lines. So that I guess it's the, from the vehicle door itself is what they're saying, that's already pretty close to 10 feet. And it certainly, you know, it's, I don't know if the guidelines, or actually, I should say the bulk regulation is, just talks about footprint of structure being where the setback is measured, you know, from the footprint of the structure to the, so we were just going by that.
Thanks.
There's a lot of pedestrian gate in the rear, but.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other discussion from, is there any discussion or questions?
Sean, I noticed that you noted there was another deviation from the permit.
And again, on that page nine, you can see that the header over the garage door is wrapped in aluminum. Aluminum trim is not something that is approved under the design guidelines. I felt it was worth noting because I was writing a staff recommendation, but it is on the rear. And if, depending on whether or not the commission approved the setback reduction, the applicant may be reconfiguring part of that anyway if they had to truncate the building. So I put it in part of the recommendation. I'm sorry, I guess it was, would have been come up in my slideshow, but the setback is certainly the main issue.
I recognize that. I just wonder if.
No, thank you for pointing that out.
The permits that are given out are being ignored in more ways than one.
It's an ongoing.
Pardon me?
It's certainly something ongoing. Our permitting, you know, we're always evaluating how we issue permits and how we conduct inspections.
Okay, thank you.
Is the only place there's a lane? It's just around?
It does continue. It looks like it may be in the SOFIT, but it's not 100% clear if it's, construction was stopped when the setback violation was observed, so we issued a stop work order. You know, it's, they obviously were still working, and it's perhaps something that was going, you know, we would have addressed that because it's material. The footprint of the structure is something that's not so easily modified.
We're talking about the footprint, not the, not that, we're not including the overhang?
Not, yeah, correct. Eaves are allowed to extend a certain amount over setbacks, but the setback is measured from the footprint.
Okay.
I guess a comment that I, from somebody who didn't hear other approvals in the past, as Robin was saying that, and the applicant also said that other approvals were done in the neighborhood, and now to be more attentive to that setback, I guess, going forward, I mean, that would be the importance of this particular issue. Am I correct to understand that?
I'm not sure what you're asking.
Okay. It seems that it's important to understand why this setback would be disapproved. However, the applicant is saying that there have been other issues, other applicants who have come to the commission and have been approved. So I'm weighing that out myself, is to say if it has been approved, but you were saying now we're real attentive to that because if it gets approved again, then we're setting some precedence, continuing to set precedence on setbacks that have already been in zoning.
Well, not in zoning necessarily. Because zoning already requires certain setbacks from the street and from property lines. This body has the ability to change those if it makes sense, and there was concern that there weren't any real, there wasn't any real assistance on determining when that was appropriate or not. And so maybe some things were approved that maybe shouldn't have been, maybe they're fine. So that's why the policy was developed.
Okay.
And of course, this is a situation where they knew that in advance and had that spelled out in their permit, so it shouldn't be a surprise, is what I'm saying. It's not as if we developed a policy and then kind of changed the rules on them. They knew about this. They knew that if they wanted to delve into that setback, that they needed to come to the commission last month.
Okay.
And I'll say as a point of clarity, this is an application for an exception. The application that's submitted met the exception to the base zoning, which would have been 10, which would have been 10 feet and a 50% reduction, and we wouldn't be here. It would meet the base zoning and therefore would not require this body to allow for a reduction of setback, which now, in, you know, in retrospect, we've been asked to do.
See, they were issued a permit already that they deviated from.
May I say something?
Well, only because since I didn't officially close public hearing, but you have just two minutes. I should have closed it, but since I didn't.
I don't know if y'all have a picture of the, in this, y'all's last meeting, well, the meeting of April 20th is when this 1401 was granted, and it was a 3-foot setback plus they had aluminum faucet, a 5-foot inch, which is in y'all's minutes here and everything. So, I mean, I understand, and I'm not trying, but I understand that you shouldn't just allow anything, but it's hard to believe that I'm so much further off, and you just approved this on April 20th, and then all of a sudden, I'll be the one where, you know, and there's, it's not just, I don't know if y'all received a picture of 1401 and the structure of it versus the way that mine is.
Stand up shortly, I have something.
I'm sorry. Yes. You know, she can just see the major difference in the offset that I have in the house that was just, or the garage that was approved on April 20th.
Okay. Thank you. And closing public hearing now.
I think the issue that I wrestle with is the fact that it was very clear in the way it was permitted. And it's not that we're deviating from what we approved in the past, but it was very clear in the permit, and I think that's the concern that I have.
Any more discussion or do you have a motion?
I hate to be the stupid one here. I'm still kind of lost in what's going on, so.
In a nutshell?
Yeah, the, if it weren't an overlay, if it were not in an overlay, the setback for, the general setback is 20 feet on a side, on a street. And then because it's on a corner, this type of corner, they reduce it to, they reduce it by 50%. So if this were outside of an overlay, the setback would be 10 feet. But the Historic Zoning Commission has the authority to review and reduce setbacks when it's historically appropriate. Most likely that, or most often that comes up with accessory structures because the rear setback is required to be 10 feet or something like that, and people want their garages closer to the alley. But in this case, it's somebody, it's, they're going towards the side. So the applicant wants the structure to be closer to the side street, closer, and again, that the standard setback is 10 feet.
So what was granted?
A, well, we were measuring from the existing structure with the addition, it would be, it would have been 10 feet.
So they got a permit to build within 10 feet?
To build up to 10 feet. Yeah.
And they are now five feet?
By measure, my measurement, yes.
So there's more than that on a couple of feet?
It's five feet.
Yeah, it's...
What's the distance to the, to the structure or the eve?
To the, to the foot of the structure. The eve, eves are allowed to overhang up to 24 inches into a setback.
Okay.
10 feet to the edge of the column.
And they're five feet to the edge of the column? No, that's not right. They're...
No, I think that's correct. I think it's five feet. That's what I understood, too.
And let's clarify that setbacks measured, well, setbacks are measured from different places. Sometimes sooner on the street, oftentimes, or most of the time, measured from the property line. And based on my understanding of this discussion, we're measuring from the property line, which is, while not surveyed, or certainly observation of a surveyed pin was not there, I'm assuming.
That's true. We are still assuming where the property line is.
Obviously, if the applicant has disproved it, it may be worthwhile to absolutely confirm where that is. It may be further in, it may be further out in the middle of the sidewalk.
Do you have a comment?
I think I want to come back on that. It's the confirm from Commissioner Ann that they were permitted. They knew what the permit was. And we did hear the applicant's builder say he made a mistake. So, I mean, I just, that's what I'm understanding and hearing, and I want that to be heard as well, is that that's how I'm hearing it. They were permitted for a certain thing, they should have followed the permit, but the builder made a mistake.
Okay, any other discussion from the commission?
Is the photograph that was handed out, is this precedent that we've granted this variance before, or what variance has this had with staffs?
Well, I was familiar with this case. I didn't approve that one, but I pulled the minutes from it. And it looks like Commissioners Gobble and Mosley, and then Chair Nielsen expressed some concern over the reduction of the setback, to the extent that limiting the visibility of how the fence would come into play in impairing the visibility. And it appears from my reading of the staff recommendation that we were reviewing it as a rear setback reduction. We may not have been aware that it was even, that we were in effect reducing the side setback as well. It's sort of that evolving, ongoing learning process of dealing with setbacks, which is...
Actually, I can clarify that a little bit if you don't mind.
Yeah, please.
That was one of the discussions that prompted the policy creation.
Okay.
But in this case, there is a side yard variance, in essence?
Not a variance. We don't issue variances.
Side yard encroachment.
There was a setback reduction before the policy was created.
Okay. And when was, what year is this?
2011.
Okay. So last year it was granted, okay. And their position is they're trying to get a, or an exception based on, basically this?
Well, they're...
Is that what the applicant is saying? Besides that they've made a mistake?
Well, I won't try to make their case for them, but...
Is that why she handed this out, though?
Yes, to show that this body has approved it in the past.
Okay, thank you. I do want to state there that that doesn't create a situation where this body can't now enforce the guidelines and the policies that we have in place.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I make the motion per staff to disapprove the setback reduction application as stated on the proposal.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. The disapproval motion carries. Okay, the next one is 1413 Russell Street.
1413 Russell Street is currently a vacant lot. It's also in Lakeland Springs East End Conservation Overlay. The lot was, a non-contributing structure on the lot was recently demolished with the commission's approval last year. The applicant is now proposing to construct a new single-family dwelling. You'll notice in the pictures in your staff recommendations that the house grade, the grade of the site is actually several feet below the street level. I walked down a set of stairs and counted 21 steps, 21 steps below grade. I think it was somewhere in the neighborhood of 12 to 15 feet. Is there a volume over there? I mean, I'm talking into the microphone. I'll try to do a little better here. I'm sorry, what was that? I guess that answers my question. I was just asking if you could hear me.
Yeah, we can hear you fine. Thank you.
The house will be two stories tall with a hip roof and a full width front porch. The overall dimensions of the house will be 28 feet wide across the front and about 18 feet from floor level to the eves. The total height from roof to grade will be similar to an infill house, two doors down, which is 30 feet tall. That was approved three years ago, four years ago now. The front porch shown on the floor plan would be eight feet deep, but that, I measured that as six feet on the elevations. And either porch depth would be appropriate, but we do need to have drawings that all match and agree with each other. There were some other errors and inconsistencies in the drawings when you go around all four elevations, like the location of the water table or the band that's right along the, the material change from the foundation going to the first floor of siding, and the size of the porch beam. Also, labels don't match the drawings. The exterior materials, if you're looking at your right elevation, will be smooth cement fiber clavbered siding with shingles, also cement fiber shingles in the dormers, split face block foundation, asphalt shingle roof, all are typical and appropriate. The exterior trim and windows will be wood. That right elevation plan also shows a chimney clad in siding. Historically, chimneys would be constructed of masonry, and that's something that the commission has required, a full height chimneys currently. Shorter chimneys or ventless chimneys, ventless fireplaces, they can be disguised in other ways, but a full height chimney should be masonry. You'll also notice that the front door on the front elevation and the porch railing are not, do not seem to be in keeping with the overall style of the house. We're requesting that further detail and information is given on that so that we know prior to permitting that it's appropriate. And on the left elevation, you'll see that the windows nearest the front are located all the way up by the front corner of the house. This window rhythm is not appropriate. The windows should be pushed back a little bit so that they're off the corner. And then that front forwardmost window on the first story is up higher than all of the others, and that should be brought down to be in line with other windows on the building. Another way to do that would be to just make that window smaller or to make it square. So the rhythm is maintained, but the size would be more compatible. Lastly, something on the site plan, pavings, sidewalk stairs, appurtenances all also need to be reviewed, and they're not shown on the drawing. So in summary of all those things, staff is recommending approval of the proposed infill with conditions that the drawings all be corrected so that measurements and labels match and that they match each other, and to show any appurtenances, including paving, lighting, fences, utility connections, HVAC, things of that nature. That the porch beam should be a minimum of 12 inches, as the drawings are labeled, but not drawn. The water table band should be lowered so that the top of the band aligns with the porch floor level. That the chimney be masonry, or that it be shortened to resemble a box bay. That the front door of the porch design be craftsman style, which is in keeping with the general style of the house. And that the two windows nearest to the front on the left elevation shall be moved back from the front corner of the house. And that the first story window be lowered or made to align more consistently with the other first story windows. All in all, staff finds the application to otherwise be in compliance with the design guidelines for Lakeland Springs. And to reiterate, we are recommending approval with those six conditions.
Okay, thank you. Is the owner or an applicant?
The applicant is not here, but I spoke to him yesterday, and he said that he agrees or accepts all of those conditions.
Okay.
Question for staff, or do you need?
No, go ahead.
The, is it typical of, and new construction, I know it's, at least, I think it's atypical for historic construction for the third level garage, or excuse me, attic sort of windows that roof, it just seems odd, and that typically that is independent of the roof form.
I, in looking at the drawings, some of the details, like the window placement on the left elevation and the location of the band board or water table along the first story, I found some pictures of similar two-story craftsman houses from Sears catalogs in the 1920s and 30s, and sent those to the applicant to show how water tables line up with the floor level in almost, in every example I found. And apparently, one of those drawings had such a dormer in it and inspired them to incorporate that into the design, so...
And with this roof form?
With that, with that very roof form. So I unwittingly, yes, there's obviously historic example, perhaps not in Nashville, but from a craftsman catalog.
In that case, I'll be quiet on that issue. On the front porch, and I know this has been noted in staff's, front porch railing or, I don't know if that, in my mind, would qualify as a railing, and I'm curious as to, if there are historic examples of that.
Same, same story for the origin of the railing wall. It was in a drawing found on Sears or a similar ready-made catalog. The details are a little bit off, though. I think the way you see the columns are, something is off. We're not quite sure. And he's finally spoken about either having the wall meet the columns, but engage them in a different way, or have, take out the middle columns, so.
Constructibility wise, I wonder, short of water coming out the steps, could be an aquarium in there if they don't raise the clavber up from the, I mean, there's some detail issues there that you, that you'll want to figure out.
And they won't breathe on the porch. I mean, that's like enclosing it, you know?
Well, I mean, if there are historic examples of it, who am I to question that? I just, there are some detail issues, as we've found even in our tours of, there's some brick homes with stone, you know, foundations that, there's a certain example, historic example of those, but in the details of executing that, they sometimes, in modern construction, end up looking quite odd and inappropriate, perhaps. Reason for commenting on.
Certainly, with all the other conditions, assuming they were to be incorporated into approval, we'll work with the applicant to resolve those issues.
Any more questions to staff?
I just have a question. The four-inch hardy is new construction?
Yeah, that's, we usually say maximum of five.
Okay.
So that would be fine, as long as it's the smooth face, not the embossed wood siding.
Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to speak for or against? Okay, closed public hearing. Any motion?
Move approval with staff recommendations.
And before we send a request for approval, they really need to give you some good drawings to review. There are so many discrepancies, so just, it's very conditional that they get you all the information you're looking for and that you feel comfortable with it.
I'll amend my motion to strenuously encourage the applicant to coordinate their drawings and provide the additional detail as requested by staff, and work with the staff to properly execute those details in the field.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next on is Zero Forest Avenue.
We're going to take just a minute. The computer's been fixed, and this one will really, if anything needs some images, I think this will be the one. To really understand it, you'll need to see it. Of course, you have the printouts in front of you.
Okay, we'll take a quick two-minute recess. Less than two minutes.
Yay. Okay. This is Zero Forest Avenue, and it's a vacant interior lot. It doesn't have any street frontage. An easement will allow for access to Lakehurst, and Lakehurst is this curved road on the right, and then in front of this, you'll see a house, and then that's Ordway to sort of orient you there. And as far as we know, there's never been any primary buildings on this lot. All right, here we go. This image on the right is upside down for a reason. It is so that it's oriented the same way as the map. But these are the two homes that are planned, and the planning commission approved subdividing this lot just recently, just on the 12th, with a variance for lot frontage due to the topographic hardship. And again, there's no street frontage. The view of these homes will be very minimal. Here on the top image, you're looking from the top of Ordway down to Lakehurst, and so you'll see this new building on the right, and in that wooded area is where these two homes are going to be. And on the bottom, that's looking from Lakehurst, on the other side of that pole is where the entrance will be. So again, you go into that wooded area, and you can see where, see that it won't really be very visible. Of course, this is in the winter. Summertime, you probably won't see it at all. This lot has a very, very steep grade. If you look through the trees, you can see a little white gable, and how high that is, that's actually a two-story building on forest. So that kind of gives you an idea of how much the grade changes. The context for this area, of course, on Lakehurst, you may be familiar with, that's the Little Hollywood area. And then on Fatherland is mostly non-contributing immediately around it. So this lot also is somewhat of a transition between the design of the Little Hollywood area and the earlier development in Lakeland East End. In terms of height, it's two stories, which is certainly appropriate for this district. It does go as tall as 34 feet in some, in one place. However, that is just about as short as they can get and still work with the grade. The street setback, the rhythm of space... The street setback, the rhythm of spacing and orientation are guidelines that staff didn't find really relevant in this case, since there is no street orientation. Proportionate rhythm of openings is appropriate, as well as the materials and the roof shape. They're all things that you have approved in the past and are appropriate for this district. The outbuildings, usually we ask that the garages, even if they are attached to new construction, be in the general location historically garages would be. But again, you have a lot here that doesn't really have a front, doesn't really have a back, so there really isn't any one location that's better than another one. The appurtness here is a driveway, and it is in the only location it really can be in. Public Works has required that it be asphalt, and on the drawings, it's shown as about, I think it was 18 feet across, and so we are recommending that it be at 14, which is what Public Works agreed to. So in summary, staff recommends approval with the conditions that the applicant seek final approval from staff for windows, pedestrian and vehicle doors, roof color, and the driveway width be no more than 14 feet across. Staff finds that the project meets 2B of the Lachlan Springs East End Neighborhood Conservation District Handbook Design Guidelines for New Construction, and the applicant is here if you have any questions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions to staff?
Staff, in speaking with Public Works, has, in a situation like this, distance to Lakehurst, and I'm sure the applicant, well, in reducing the, requesting a reduction in driveway width is, you always have to worry about fire apparatus and emergency apparatus in situations like this, but by doing so, are we not, I guess, sending the applicant down a road that they may have to then undo, or that we might be encouraging something that is in turn unsafe?
I think initially, that's exactly how Public Works was looking at this, is sort of an alley, and so that it needed to be the width of an alley and paved like an alley. But then they recognized it's really only serving two homes, and they came up with the 14 feet before I even called and asked for it, so they were already there. It wasn't an exception that they made.
So moved.
Thanks.
Okay, would the owner or architect like to come speak before the Commission? Please hit the podium and state your name and address.
Hi, good afternoon. My name's Mitch Hodge, I'm the architect for the project. And this project actually started out, the parcel, as you can see, as Robin outlined, it's landlocked, it has no street frontage. The only access is from the northeast corner there by an easement there. It's originally zoned as a two-family attached structure, so that's where we started the design process. That's what could be built there right now, two houses. In going through the several weeks, not months, of design meeting with the neighbors, and with historic also, we decided it'd be to everyone's advantage to split these into two houses. It would be more respective to the neighbors, and also allow us to cite the properties further away from the neighbors as opposed to just cram them right up to one, particularly one on the west there. So we're not adding any density to the project with respect to the alley. If it were a two-family attached structure, it would be built as a driveway, and that's why they allowed us to reduce the width of that. The site is very challenging. It slopes about 22 feet from the back to the front to that sort of a courtyard setting that the easement goes into, so that's also what we've designed the houses to address. There is no street frontage. We're basically just focusing both of these houses towards this courtyard. It's built into a hill, so we're having to, obviously the fronts are taller there, but we also need to allow them some sort of a backyard and way to get to it. That's all I have. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Any questions to the architect?
I really like it.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much.
There's a lot of decimal points in progress, is point zero, zero point zero or zero point one?
Okay, great. Thanks. Okay, thank. Anyone else? Would anyone else like to speak for or against it? Okay, closed public hearing. Any discussion or motion?
Move approval based on staff recommendation.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries for Zero Forest Avenue. Okay, 1512 Beechwood Avenue.
All right, 1512 Beechwood Avenue, as you can see, is a one-and-a-half-story transitional Victorian house. The current proposal is to construct a new detached accessory structure in the rear yard of the property. The garage will be square with a footprint just under 700 square feet with a pyramidal roof peeking at 23 feet tall above the floor level. The setbacks, it does meet all the setbacks, and the scale is appropriate, but it's larger than staff was able to approve administratively, which is why we're bringing it to you today. One of the reasons, the materials will be brick, as you can see from the drawings, on the first story with cement fiber siding on the walls of the four upper-story dormers. Very fine. The, okay, yeah, and the other materials will just be asphalt shingle roof, and the current proposal is for vinyl windows with internal muntens. I should note that it's brick to grade, so there is no additional foundation material. Vinyl windows have been found to be incompatible by the Historic Zoning Commission on previous applications, as have windows with internal muntens. Wood or aluminum-clad windows typically are what has been, have been approved most often in the past, as have either true divided lights, fully simulated divided lights, or windows with one-over-one sashes, which is no muntens. Staff has asked for, had asked for additional details from the drawings you received on certain things, such as the foundation material, which I just explained, window sizes, window sills are missing from the drawings, mullions, and certain things about trim. The applicant has gotten all that information to us earlier this week. So staff is recommending approval of the new accessory structure with only the one condition, condition four on the recommendation, which is that windows shall be an appropriate material, which is something that we could approve at the staff level, again, typically wood or aluminum. Otherwise, the structure meets the Design Guidelines for the Belmont Hillsborough Neighborhood Conservation Overlay.
Thank you. Any questions to staff?
You might have said this, but on page nine, where the applicant proposes to install the vinyl windows, did you say this, that staff recommended wood, and it says there, applicant has not agreed to this condition? Did you say they agreed to it this past week?
No, I'm sorry. They provided drawings and information that met the other conditions, but that is the one outstanding condition that we still are including in our recommendation for approval, is that it not have the vinyl windows.
And my question on the site plan, so this, this is the proposed appurtness, garage?
Garage, yes. It's a, it's in the rear, looking at the site plan, the rear right corner, which I guess is the northeast corner, but the vehicle doors, the garage doors face to the side, to the interior of the lot. So it does meet that setback. If they face the alley, the setback is required to be deeper, but.
It's facing into.
But it faces the side.
Okay. So you don't really have to have a floor plan on a garage, right? Okay.
Not, yeah, not really. It's helpful if it's complicated structure, but here it's a square. Yeah, and it's, I forget the exact, but he was very precise in the measurement, it's 26 feet so-and-so inches, so it really falls just under 700 square feet.
I know where this house is, that's why I'm very questioning on.
But it's got a loft or an apartment or something like that.
It does have dormers, and here is, just, this picture shows a garage built at the house next door, which is similar height, about 23 feet, but because the grade drops from front to back, it doesn't, it reduces the perceived height, so.
Okay.
It's not, you know, exactly apples and apples, but it's a pretty good approximation of how it'll look.
But it is a two-story?
The eve height, the primary eve is one story, and then it has, it has a lot of usable upper-story space, but we would still call it one-and-a-half.
No bathroom upstairs? I mean, if they were to, any, you don't know?
I haven't reviewed the interior. That would be a codes issue if, you know, a plumbing permit is required, but we're just reviewing the exterior of the building. It seems, I mean, since the first floor, and it has a two-car vehicle door, it seems like it is a true garage and not to be a dwelling or anything like that.
So when you permit that, so that they're not coming back to put, it's going to be garage, it's not going to be a residence?
And that'll be up to codes, because we don't deal with use at all.
Although at under 700 square feet, I think, were they to do that, it would meet, you know, I don't want to go all the way out on the limb, I think it would meet the detached accessory dwelling. Maybe, maybe not the height, but the footprint would.
Which is an additional process, some additional steps they would need to go through. But otherwise, we don't deal with use at all.
Thank you.
And I should say that the applicant is here as well, if you have other questions.
I wanted clarity, it's noted there's three-foot side and rear setbacks, and I may have missed this, does that meet the base zone?
It does, yes, to my knowledge.
Okay, any other questions for staff? Thanks. Would the applicant or architect like to say anything? Please come forward and state your name and address.
My name is Jimmy Kinkade, and I live at 1512 Beechwood. And I just want to add that the windows are very nice Pella, high-end windows that's between wood and metal. And I have, I have installed, it wasn't Pella, I think it was Pella, I've installed these type of windows before in the same zone, so I was just kind of wondering why I can't do it now. So anyway, they're, they're not the cheap windows, they're in between wood and metal, and they're low maintenance, and so I'll just ask for your approval on that. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else from the, like to say anything about it for or against? Okay, closed public hearing. Any more discussion or motion?
So he is asking us to approve the windows that staff does not want?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
It's not part of the guidelines.
I mean, that's what they want?
I think so. Yeah, that's, it's a line carried at one of the major Home Depot, not Home Depot, but home repair store.
But the dividers are inside. The divi-
Yeah, they're between, it's double-pane windows or double-pane insulated windows, and the muntens are between the two panes of glass.
And we don't like that, right?
I picked up a catalog, it didn't show that one-over-one windows, it doesn't show them in the catalog, but if they are an option, that that would be something other than the material that would be appropriate.
Okay, any other further discussion or motion?
I move approval of 1512 Beechwood Avenue with staff recommendations.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries, staff recommendation, with their recommendations are for approval. Okay, is there any other new business?
Yes, just a couple of things. If I may, I just wanted to let you know of a couple of dates that are coming up that you might be interested in. The African-American History Conference is on February 10th, and it's at TSU, and there's more information about that on our website. Wanted to remind you about the Tennessee Preservation Trust Annual Statewide Preservation Conference. That's May 31st through June 2nd. As a part of that, please, please mark on your calendars June 1st, we'll have all-day training specifically for commissioners. I know that sounds like a lot, but it's actually a lot of fun as well, and so please plan on joining us on June 1st. And that takes care of our CLG requirement for annual training. And also, if you're interested in going to North Virginia in July, the National Alliance of Preservation Commissions is happening July 18 through 22nd, and that's all we have.
Thank you, Robin.
I have a question for Robin.
Yep.
Some of the cases we've seen before, there's this view angle from the street, is that in just specific neighborhoods, or is that everywhere that we need to be cognizant of?
Certainly, we, we look at the, I'm not sure I'm answering your question, so correct me if I'm wrong.
There's been cases where you'd have this view angle, and if it falls outside of the angle, then that's a-
Oh, yeah. If something fall, really, there's no way an addition can be seen from the street, then it's something that we don't review in the conservation overlays or any of the overlays.
The one we saw earlier today with the four-foot.
A small portion of that will be seen.
Yes, so why wasn't that brought up as a curiosity? Because I remember it being a big deal in the previous case.
Were we reviewing it because it can be seen? Is that-
Yes, yes, like you guys recommended non-approval of an addition that exceeded the view plane, or was, fell out of the-
Okay, I understand. The issue isn't whether it can be seen or not, but we try to get everything kind of tucked behind the building where that's appropriate, but because of this building being off to one side and being at an angle on the lot, we thought that, and that portion coming out so far back.
Right.
That it would be minimally visible.
Thank you.
Does that help?
I'd like to ask a question. If it's appropriate, can I ask you what your legal opinion was of the, there were two particular things?
Wait a minute, let me, turn them both on. Which one is? Speak, oh, there we go.
Let me, let me encourage you, if you have any, if you have any, if you'd like some legal advice on an issue that you think might come back to the board.
Are we on the record?
Should I adjourn the meeting?
Yeah, it's still during the record, and I encourage you, it just, I can't, I can't meet with more than one commissioner at a time, but I'd be happy to meet with you and answer any questions that you might have.
Oh, okay.
Any legal issues.
That'd be great.
Question adjourned?
So moved.
All right, okay. Meeting adjourned.